All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to go ahead at this time and call the meeting to order. Before we get started, I'd like to call the role Vice Chairman Taylor.
Present.
Councilman Flowers.
Present.
Councilman Wetzel.
Here.
Councilman Williams.
Here.
Madam Clerk, let the record reflect that we have a quorum present.
Mr. Chair, point of order, we're not recording, it doesn't appear.
Okay. Madam Clerk, are you on? I'm not sure. I can't tell from my end if we're recording or not.
Yes, I'm on and I'm recording.
Okay, all right. Before we get started, let's do the invocation and pledge allegiance, if we would, Councilman Taylor, if you would be so kind enough, lead us in that.
Most gracious, everlasting, true and wise God, we do thank you for allowing us this opportunity to gather for Colleton County Council regular scheduled meeting is virtual. Lord, but we thank you for your grace and your mercy that it allowed us to be here to conduct the business of the county. Lord, we pray for this county and our staff. We pray for the administration, for the people who live, work, and serve here. Lord, the people that come to visit. We pray, Lord, that we make decisions that are pleasing in your sight, that you'll get the glory out of our life and will always give your name the praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the mission with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Taylor.
Thank you, Chair.
Again, I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening that I see online. Tonight is Tuesday, October the 5th. This is our regularly scheduled meeting for the month of October. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, of course, we are holding the meeting virtually and the public is able to stream in through our link on the Collin County homepage at www.collitoncounty.org/live. Also, any individual who would like to participate in public comments can do so at www.collitoncounty.org commentary. So again, we welcome everyone. We'll go ahead and get started into the agenda. I will point out that Resolution 21-R-54, there was a resolution replacing that one. Hopefully, everyone got a copy. We had a, someone, a nominee to a board who was previously already serving on a board and that resolution was changed to reflect, to reflect that, to remove that individual from nomination. So other than that, we'll go ahead and get started. The first item we have here is number four, approval of minutes of our regular meeting of September 7, 2021.
I moved the minutes second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries unanimously. Bring us to item five, awards and recognitions. We do have a proclamation this evening honoring Ms. Patricia Grant for receiving the order of the Palmetto. I'm not sure if Ms. Grant is with us, but I'm going to go ahead at this time and read the proclamation into the record. Proclamation for Collington County Council's recognition and appreciation of Patricia C. Grant and her service to Collington County. Whereas we are here to express our appreciation to Patricia Cochran Grant and honor her for her distinguished 20-year career as Collin County Clerk of Court. And whereas Patricia, she, Patricia C. Grant is a resident of Collington County and a graduate of Collington High School. She married Glenn Grant and are the parents of two sons and four grandchildren. And whereas Patricia C. Grant began her career with Collington County in 1974, working in the clerk's office. And whereas Ms. Grant was elected in November of 2000 as a clerk of court, being the first African-American to hold a countywide elected position in Collington County. And whereas over her lifetime, she has served on many boards, including the Collin Medical Center Board of Trustees, Collin County Alcohol and Drug Abuse Commission, Alternative Dispute Resolution Commission, and was a member of the Colliton Training School, Colliton High School Alumni Association Incorporated Board of Directors, Treasurer, South Carolina Clerks of Court and Register of Deeds Advisory Committee, appointed by the Supreme Court Judge, as well as a member of the Mount Olive Baptist Church. And whereas Ms. Grant's philosophy of life is, quote, "The goal of life is to take care of people, places, and times around you and offer your services to God," end quote. Whereas Patricia C. Grant received the order of the Palmetto from Governor Henry McMaster on September 28, 2021, for her dedicated service to her community and state. And now therefore, Collin County Council does hereby proclaim its appreciation for Patricia C. Grant's service to Collington County adopted this fifth day of October 2021.
Move the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? And the motion carries unanimously. Bring us to item six on the agenda, appearances and public presentations. I have here item A, Michelle Gaston, Service Corps of Retired Executives. Does anyone know if Ms. Gaston is on live with us?
She's scheduled to be here. She called and said she would be on the call, Mr. Chair.
I see a phone number that I don't recognize.
That may be Ms. Grant that you see.
Oh, okay. Ms. Gaston, are you present?
Give me a second. Let me see if I can raise her right. Oh, that might be.
She just, just popped up, I believe.
Got her, yep.
Porzingis.
All right. Ms. Gaston, can you hear me? I think you must be on mute. I think she's trying to get in now.
Are you able to hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am, how you doing?
I'm good, thank you. Let me try this one more time. You still hear me?
Yes, ma'am, we can hear you loud and clear.
Technology is something else. How is everyone this evening?
Everyone doing well. We actually just got your section of the agenda, so.
Oh, that is great.
You have perfect timing, so we're, we're, we'll be glad to hear from you at this time.
That is great. I have a colleague, Michael Waters, and we're going to be doing this presentation in tandem. And I want to make sure that he is here because he is going to be talking pretty much about SCORE as an organization. And I see that he's not here, so I'm going to go ahead and I'm going to get started. I emailed to Ms. Brinson a copy of the presentation that we're going to be making tonight. Does everyone have a copy of that? Or would you like me to share my screen?
I do not have a copy, but does everybody else got one?
Nope.
Let's see if we can share the screen. It says only the host can share the screen on this meeting. If you tell me the name of the host, I'll gladly email the presentation to the host, or we can just talk off the cuff. Why don't we just do that? We'll go ahead and talk off the cuff and we'll get it to you later. How about that?
That, that would be fine.
Okay. Mike, my colleague, Michael Waters is here and he's going to take a few minutes to talk about SCORE South Carolina Low Country and all the services that it offers. And then I'm going to talk specifically about the Minority Small Business Support Program. Mike, good evening.
Good evening, everyone. We appreciate you taking a few moments to hear about SCORE South Carolina Low Country. And we're also here to answer questions you have, Michelle and myself. So as way of introduction, I am a business mentor, volunteer, and the vice chair of our chapter. And Michelle has not, not only her business mentor responsibilities, but has taken on the, the chairperson responsibilities for our Minority Outreach Committee. So SCORE, if you're not maybe as familiar with our organization, we're a nonprofit, 501(c)(3) organization, and we are a resource partner of the U.S. Small Business Administration, the SBA. We're all volunteers, all of the SCORE volunteers across the country in the field operations, like myself, are, and Michelle, are volunteers. And there's about 43 of us or so in our chapter. We're one of 240 chapters around the country. And our four counties of responsibility are Colliton, so we're pleased to be able to have this conversation tonight, Beaufort County, Jasper County, and Hampton County. So we're actively involved in mentoring small business and nonprofit clients throughout all four counties. We also work closely with the other five chapters in South Carolina and because of it being an adjacent chapter, the Savannah, Georgia chapter. We do support business in all stages from startup through, if perchance, the business founder wants to exit the business. And the same thing for nonprofits. We work at the direction of and by request of small business and nonprofits. We're very easy to engage in terms of our services and we make sure that that process is as smooth as possible. I'll cover that in one minute. We also have outreach programs. We're talking about our Minority Outreach Program tonight regarding a grant program. We also do similar for female entrepreneurs and also veterans. With the way we interact is such that our services are without charge and are confidential to our clients. So in other words, we don't charge for any of the mentoring activities that we may offer. And we're getting the slides coming up and we're going to go to the next slide, how we serve. There we go, the next one. That, perfect, mentoring education and tools. We do work with a client individually at the client's request and we do not discuss anything beyond the client itself outside of SCORE, unless the client gives us permission to do so. So our process is without charge and confidential. The way that we can be engaged is through a website, the national website, score.org. Find a mentor and it's simply a matter of entering information, a few questions. It's done by zip code and it's routed to our chapter for the four counties that I mentioned. We also get referrals from banks, lending institutions, word of mouth. And really, if, if you happen to know a mentor or you wanted to reach out to Michelle or me, we would then help with getting that ball rolling for the client that you may be referring to us. We also use a variety of free tools that are available on the score.org or on our local website. And we don't really focus on jargon and things of that nature. When a bank refers a client to us and they say, "This client has an interesting story to tell, but they need a business plan, financials, and the like." We help by listening first to what that client would like to accomplish, what are their dreams and aspirations for their business or their nonprofit. And we help build it through listening and guiding. So it's really the work of the business owner or the nonprofit, say it's a board or, or chair or something of that nature. We understand where they're now, where do they want to go. We also, because of our outreach to communities, business communities, nonprofit organizations and the like, we offer free workshops and webinars. And we do that now virtually, although we would like to return back to in-person mentoring, in-person workshops. But we've been able to successfully transition to a virtual format like we're using here tonight. We hope that as this pandemic changes course, hopefully not only for the health of all involved, but from a business and nonprofit organization standpoint, we have been very actively engaged in all phases of mentoring and workshops virtually since the beginning of the pandemic. In fact, we focused on helping businesses get through and receive the Small Business Administration Paycheck Protection Loans, which are intended to turn into grants if the loan recipient follows all the guidelines, which is pretty clear how to do that. We also helped with the Economic Injury Disaster Loans, or EIDL loans, that have recently expanded to small business and some nonprofits as well. And things like the shuttered venue program for those venues that were shut down, that were performing arts or things of that nature. And we also can help if there is a specific need. So for instance, let's say you are aware of a specific group of clients that you have in Colliton County or an individual. We can then talk about the best approach and go from there. And our workshops are really varied in terms of whether it's startup or it's how to stay in business successfully. Or we have a series that's starting on nonprofits this week. We also have a ongoing veteran entrepreneurship program where we rely heavily on veterans and other active military in order to guide us on making sure we can reach out to the veteran community in our four counties. Okay, we can go to the next slide. And we just want to emphasize that our volunteers, and we are looking for volunteers in all four counties, including Colliton County, which could include people that are in business today. So it's not just a matter, you might have heard that one, at one point, the volunteers for SCORE were all retired. Certainly, many of us are or were mainly retired. We may have other things that we're, we're doing. But we also have active business people, people active in nonprofit management. So we are looking for additional volunteers to assist. So that's kind of a really brief overview. We'd be happy to, after we've gone through the remainder of the comments, then I'm going to turn this over to Michelle for now, but we're here to also answer questions. So at this point, Michelle?
Mike, thank you. Good evening, everyone. As Mike stated, my name is, my name is Michelle Gaston. I am the, happy to serve as the chair of the SCORE South Carolina Low Countries Minority Outreach Program. One of the first initiatives under this new program is our Minority Small Business Support Program. That program is a competitive grant program that is actually being run right now. The competition is happening right now as we speak. And it's a program that offers awards ranging from $500 to $2,500 to minority small business owners and companies that are within SCORE's four-county jurisdiction. These funds can be used for direct company operations. And when I say direct operations, that's something such as marketing, advertising, a website design, small equipment purchases, those types of things. Mentors will be provided to all of the applicants who need help with preparing a business plan and help preparing the application because a business plan is one of the requirements in order to be able to participate in the program. SCORE is so committed to this program that SCORE is willing to absorb all of the administrative fees associated with this program so that the grant recipients will actually be able to spend dollar for dollar every amount that they're actually awarded at the end of the competition. Now, why is SCORE doing this? SCORE is doing this because it recognizes that minority small business ownership is underrepresented nationally and in the low country. And the SCORE South Carolina Low Country Chapter is doing everything that it can to help, to help to assist as many minority small business owners as possible. And this program is just the first initiative on that path. Now, who's eligible to apply for these grants? Any small businesses that have 25 employees or less, any small businesses that have a minimum of a 51% minority ownership and minority for purposes of this program is categorized as members of the African-American, Asian, Hispanic, Latino, or Native American population. The business can be in any phase. It can be in any phase from startup phase, that means less than a year old, or it can actually be an established business. The business must be able to prepare and present a business plan and the business must be located in SCORE South Carolina Low Country service area. And by default, if it's located there, the assumption we make is that the business is also registered in South Carolina. And as part of our cross-check procedures, we do verify the eligibility requirements and eligibility criteria before we process any of the grant applications. We're happy to say that we've received $36,000 to date to fund this program and that is the maximum amount at this time that we have available to award to any recipients. And the awards will probably happen during the November, December timeframe. We're forecasting to receive additional funding for this program in the future. And I just wanted to tell you who our sponsors are for this program. In addition to SCORE South Carolina Low Country, Truist Bank and Wells Fargo Banks are also sponsoring this program. And that's a testimony to their commitment to seeing minority small businesses succeed in our communities. If we don't by chance award all $36,000 during the current grant cycle, any unused funds will be rolled forward and we will offer this program again in 2022, early 2022. We're going to look at the success of this program or any challenges that we face and we're going to leverage that information so that we can make the next program stronger. And we anticipate that this program is going to be successful and this program is currently serving as a pilot. So if this program is successful, we expect to roll this program out throughout the entire state of South Carolina and ultimately to other SCORE countries nationwide. Now, the first question all of you ask is, well, how do our county business owners get involved? I want to give you a breakdown of the applications that we've received so far for the program. And this is a breakdown as of yesterday morning. And of course, this breakdown is obsolete now. As of yesterday morning, we had 55 applications in the system. And I want to tell you about the strength in Colliton County. This program began on, at 9:00 a.m. on September 7th. And I believe by 12:00 p.m., we had four applications from Colliton County. So the word has definitely gotten out. We're pleased that through yesterday morning, we had 21 applications from Colliton County. I know that as I scanned my emails today, at least another 10 applications have come in. I don't have the county-by-county breakdown of those additional applications. But what I would like to offer to this council is an updated presentation at the end of the week because the grant window closes at 5:00 p.m. tomorrow. So we will have the final application count as of Friday. And all I'd like to do is to submit a revised presentation that will tell you what Colliton County's final numbers are. And we are very, very pleased because this is, this is one of the major enrolls that the chapter has made into Colliton County. And we were very pleased and are very pleased with the results so far of the efforts. And I want to say that we have an advisory committee of community and business leaders who are independently ranking and scoring all of our applications for us. This committee is comprised of a representative from each one of the four counties that are in SCORE South Carolina Low Country service area. And we also have a fifth representative, Mr. Anthony Brockington, who's the business manager for the South Carolina Commission for Minority Affairs. This body is reviewing all of the applications that make it through SCORE South Carolina Low Country screening process. And they are, and this body is making recommendations regarding the award amounts that should be made to future grant recipients. Ms. Breann Buckner is the representative from Colliton County. She is a teacher at Colliton High School and she has done a yeoman's job of getting out, getting the word out so that Colliton County small business owners who are eligible to apply can actually receive consideration regarding this grant opportunity. Now, we are very happy with the number of applications that we've received so far, but this entire process has revealed some striking things to SCORE South Carolina Low Country. And we're going to need community leadership and community assistance to try to resolve some of these problems. We had a lot of challenges as we reviewed the applications. And every application that comes in is reviewed and screened to make sure that the applicant is eligible to apply for the grant and to make sure that the material, the business plan, the application, that they are, they're in sync, they cross foot, the numbers in the business plan add up, the ask matches the grant amount, there's consistency between the language in the business plan and the language in the application. And we found that we had a lot of challenges related to the quality of the applications that were submitted. Many of them were not complete. Some folks, because this program was advertised across the entire state of South Carolina, we got applications everywhere. So all of those applications, of course, were immediately denied because they weren't eligible. But our biggest problem that we saw related to this process had to do with the business plan. We found that a significant number of the business owners did not either have a business plan nor did they know how to prepare one. We at SCORE offered a mentor, the assistance of a mentor, to each one of these business owners to help them strengthen their applications and to help them prepare their business plans if they needed that assistance. The lack of integration was one of the main things that would have prevented an application from moving forward to the advisory committee for screening and scoring. So a mentor was offered to each applicant who submitted an incomplete application to make sure that the integration was there because SCORE South Carolina Low Country wants to make sure that every person who's eligible to get a grant can receive one and that all of the applicants at least cross the finish line. Now, as we looked at these business plans, we also noticed that the financial projections were inaccurate or they were missing or it honestly looked, in some instances, as if the numbers were just pulled out of the air. So we recognize that there's a serious gap in the community and I'm talking about all four, the community in all four counties that SCORE South Carolina Low Country services. And we want to have an after-action meeting to try to resolve the issue of the gaps and try to figure out what can SCORE do to help these small business owners get over the finish line. We, after we have our after-action meeting, we're going to explore and try to develop community relationships so that we can try to address some of these applicant needs. Now, how can Colliton County help? How can the Colliton County Council help with this initiative? SCORE South Carolina Low Country would like to develop a relationship with the county. We want to maintain a relationship. We want to have a liaison with the county council. We would like to, and we'd like for that liaison pretty much to work with us to sit in or be involved with our after-action meetings related to this competitive grant program and talk to, talk to them about the problems we saw, the issues specific to Colliton County that the county might be able to address. We'd like an introduction to the Walterboro Chamber of Commerce or any other chamber of commerce that services Colliton County because that body houses most of the business owners in the area. So we want an introduction to that body so that we can try to leverage some of the workshops and some of the services that we offer to try to strengthen minority small business owners in Colliton County. We also want to be able to promote SCORE's free services to the business owners so that they are aware, they don't have to go all the way to Charleston to meet with a SCORE mentor. They don't have to go elsewhere in, in the state of South Carolina or even to Georgia to try to get some of the services. Most of the workshops that are offered by SCORE South Carolina Low Country are free or low to no cost. So we want business owners to be able to take advantage of the services that they're offered. What we'd also like to do is to offer and organize education workshops in Colliton County. And we want to start with the basics. How do you start and operate a business? We want to then expand to financial literacy. Mike talked about the idle loans that this chapter was actively involved in helping its clients apply for earlier in the year. There were a significant number of small businesses, however, that could not apply for those loans or if they did apply, were denied. And also related to the Paycheck Protection Program, the same issue because they didn't have, they were not able to prepare the business plan. They did not have accurate financial information. They kept their financial records in a shoebox so they couldn't compile them in a way that would make them competitive and make them be eligible for the, for this, if, this money. So what we would like to do is to organize a financial literacy workshop or series of workshops to help small business owners understand that finance is your friend, that if you're going to be in business, you have to have good finances. You have to be able to organize the finances so that you can, you can tell your story to a banker or you can tell your story to the Small Business Administration to be able to plead your case in order to be able to receive some funding. We also want to do business plan preparation. And for, for purposes of this grant program, we requested that everyone submit a simplified business plan. So a So it didn't go through all of the checks and balances that a full-blown business plan would have requested, because that was just too arduous a task for our applicants, and they were only asking for a maximum of twenty-five hundred dollars. So we simplified the plan and the process as much as we could, but we'd like to hold a workshop that talks about actual business plan preparation and those kind of things that need to be considered as a business plan is being prepared. And we want to talk about how to make sure that the numbers cross foot with the words that are in the plan. There's got to be some kind of cohesion to the request and to the plan so that it makes sense to the body that you, that, that is being presented to. The next slide is just a flyer that was sent out early in September to advertise the grant program, and something pretty much to catch a small business owner's eye. The eligibility criteria, how to apply for the grant, those kind of things. And I want to note that the deadline for applications is five PM tomorrow night, October sixth, twenty-twenty-one. I have, as I've said, we've got a flurry of applications in today. I will be up tonight going through all those applications and making sure that everything that, that should be there is there, so that the applications can move forward to the advisory committee. If everything is not there, then I will be writing the applicant, requesting additional information, and giving them until four fifty-nine tomorrow to resubmit their package so that it can be considered for grant, it, it can be considered for the grant money. Now, I realize I've gone through this very, very, very quickly, and I'm going to skip to, I'm going to skip questions because Mike mentioned that you can get in touch with us if you want more information and those kind of things. So our email addresses are listed here, but I am going to update this presentation, as I mentioned earlier, so that it gives you the full complement and the, the closing number of applications by county. And I will do this and resubmit this to you by Friday. This document will have our contact information in it, so that if you have any questions or, or need more information from us, you're able to get that information. And I've gone through this very quickly, so before I stop sharing my screen, are there any questions about anything in the presentation?
Okay, anybody have any questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I can stop sharing my screen.
Okay, well, we thank you, Ms. Gaston, for making your presentation, Mr. Waters.
Thank you so much for having us, and I will submit, I will get this information to Ms. Brenton on Friday, so that you have that, and if you have any questions, please reach out to us. But we hope that this is the start of a very long relationship that SCORE South Carolina Low Country will have with Collin County, and we're very, very interested in working with your business owners.
Okay, sounds very good. Anybody have any questions before we move to the next item? Okay, hearing none again.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Okay, all right, and we, next under appearances and public presentations, item B, Mr. Charles Bright from the Ritter Community Revitalization Project. We have a letter in the packet. I don't know if Mr. Bright is online with us or not.
They're going to bring him out to waiting room.
Oh, okay. Do we have, do we have a waiting room now?
Yes.
An open session? Mr. Bright, can you hear me?
I can't hear you.
Okay. We're, we're now up to your section of the agenda. We have a, or at least I have a copy, I assume everybody's got a copy of the letter that you had written to council. So we'll be glad to hear, hear from you at this time.
Very good. Can you hear me? Can you still hear me?
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, County Chair and the County Council members. My name is Charles E. Bright, Jr., and of course, I was born and raised in South Carolina. With fond memories of my times growing up within the community. Memories of a vibrant and bustling town that had stores, schools, a post office, community ball field with games. We recently returned back to my hometown, Ritter, and was motivated to try to restore the sense of community that we experienced years ago. So we took a part in the Ritter Community Revitalization Project, the RCRP. The Ritter Community Revitalization Project is a five oh one C three nonprofit organization that in twenty nineteen, in Ritter, our purpose is to restore community unity and to build a community resource center that will help support education endeavors, social economics, and job development for our residents. In the Ritter community, a large percentage of the population is willing to help build relationships while strengthening Collin County and work effectively with this council and other organized organizations, the City of Walterboro, the State of South Carolina, and any other organization within the state. The RCRP staff wants to assist our residents with their medical, mental, and health disparities, especially our children and seniors, and also to prevent crime. We are here to acquire resources to help make our county a better place to live, especially here in Ritter. For this purpose, we would appreciate if the county council members from Collin County would actively take part in this mission and help us make a real difference in the lives of the Ritter community residents. We would like to have a share of the funds for twenty-twenty-one, and if all is already allocated, please place us on the twenty-twenty-two budget. We are here to learn and understand the process in obtaining grants, local, state, and federal funds, and any other funds that may come available. We have the proper personnel within the community that would really like our local council members to aid in the application process for these funds. And we sincerely thank you tonight for putting us on the agenda and for future endeavors within Collin County. Again, we thank you very much for this space.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bright. Does anyone have any questions this time for Mr. Bright? Okay, hearing none. Mr. Bright, we appreciate you being here. We'll certainly take this into consideration, and we'll, we'll have some discussion on this hopefully at some point in the future.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for being present.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right, we'll move on then to item seven, the administrator's briefing. Mr. Griffin, I'll turn it over to you at this time.
I'm the chairman and council. Good evening. I stumbled on the agenda tonight. It's pretty straightforward, the items there. I did want to bring one thing to council's attention to help get the word out. We have recently reenacted the Collin County Accommodations Tax Advisory Board. There we have, previous years, we had not collected enough accommodations tax to be available for grants added to the community from the Accommodations Tax Advisory Board. Within the last couple of years, we have started to collect over the, the excess of twenty-five thousand dollars, which that excess goes into a fund to be allocated back out through the accommodations, Tax Accommodations Advisory Board, and then through council. The board itself has seven members, excuse me, six members, four from lodging and hospitality, they must be from that industry, one from cultural arts, and two that are at large. We have right now about sixty thousand dollars that needs to be allocated. With that, twenty thousand of that has to be allocated by June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-two, and then the additional forty thousand needs to be allocated by June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-three. So any of those watching in the community, as well as our council members and others, we need to encourage some folks from these industries to participate so we can keep that money here in Collin County, and it does not go back to the state. Do we have any questions in that regard, Mr. Chairman?
There's one question, Mr. Chair, that I, I was talking to some people in hospitality and lodging, in specific from the hotels, and most of the ones that you would probably seek to work with are accommodations, serving on city accommodations tax board. Would that be a conflict if they were to do both? Could they do city and county, or that's going to be dual office? Since the city is a municipality, it's not a state creature of the state.
Sean, would you like to chime in on that?
I can do some research on that, Councilman. I will tell you that there are, there are city positions that have been held to be offices for dual office holding, so I don't know that the fact that one would be city and one is, is not city would be dispositive of the issue, but I'm happy to do some research on that for y'all.
Thank you. I have a question.
Go ahead, Doc.
All right, I was going to ask Mr. Griffin. With the accommodations tax board, do you have, or I know, I heard you say something about reenact. Is it going to be the same individuals there? Are you needing new members, or what?
No, we, we need all new members, Councilman Williams.
Okay.
That, the board has been inactive since two thousand and nine.
Okay. Thank you.
That was going to be my question also, is that the board technically was still in existence, but anyway, we'll, I guess then we need to try to act quickly then to, when we get to this part about advertising for board vacancies, do we need to add that to the board vacancies to advertise?
I believe we've already advertised it in previous, we just had, we haven't had any participation yet, so that's why we wanted to, John and I were talking.
I think you got one, right?
We may have.
In this week's, I know you have at least one, because Ms. Hesha Kennard received notice from the county that she was approved to serve on the accommodations tax board.
Yes, sir, we have one.
Right. Well, okay, anything else in that regard, Ms. Griffin, or?
Yes, sir, that's all I have for you tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, that's it. All right, and we'll move on to item eight. Is there a motion that we go into public hearing?
Let's go.
We have a motion. Is there a second? All right, motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We are now in public hearing. We have three items in public hearing tonight. The first one is Ordinance Twenty-one dash O dash zero nine, authorizing the acquisition of certain heavy equipment and vehicles by Collin County, South Carolina, by lease purchase financing in the amount of not exceeding five million, five hundred thousand. The execution and delivery of certain instruments, including a lease purchase agreement by Collin County and other matters relating thereto. Do we, well, we're in public hearing. Do we have any, anyone online that wants to make any comments, or have we received any comments related to this particular ordinance? Okay, hearing none. We'll move to item B. Ordinance Twenty-one dash O dash ten, an ordinance to amend the Collin County Code of Ordinances, Chapter three point oh eight, purchasing to provide for the adoption of Section three point oh eight point one seven five for protest procedures related to purchasing for state and federal grants in order to meet federal grant requirements. Do we have anyone online, or do we have received any comments related to this particular ordinance? Okay, hearing none. We'll move then. We have a community development block grant public hearing concerning the program performance and accomplishments. And this is related to the Floyd Buckner Building Demolition Project. Do we have anyone who would like to make any comments regarding this community development block grant?
Is Michelle Knight here?
I'm, I'm not aware of anybody that's present. Hearing no comments then. Is there a motion that we close the public hearing?
Here's Kimberly.
Kimberly's here.
Hello, Kimberly?
Yes, sir.
We just got to the notice of public hearing. We were getting ready to go out of the public hearing, but do you want to speak to this community development block grant?
Yes, sir. Actually, I have two close-out public hearings that I need to do tonight, and I know you've got a full agenda, so I'll go through them as quickly as I can. So the first one is for the Floyd Buckner Building Demolition, and this project was awarded in September two thousand and twenty. It is a result of the tornado that we had in April two thousand and twenty. It took the roof off of the building and deemed it structurally unsound. The building was located at the corner of Jeffrey's Boulevard and West Washington Street in downtown Walterboro. It was actually a three-story building with much of it being underground. It was demolished, and the lot was filled with, backfilled with dirt, and then it had grass on top. This project was funded through a slum blight national objective, and it serves all the city residents, which is about forty-nine percent LMI. The reason it's not the fifty-one like we normally have is because it was slum blight as an urgent need. The grant was awarded for three hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. We have done all of the work, and we have spent a hundred and ninety-six thousand. So we will be returning a hundred and sixty-six thousand to the state that was unused. We had to commit the ten percent match plus whatever else for ineligible expenses. Our match ended up at seventy-six thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars. And this project is set to be monitored financially and programmatically in October, and then we hope to have it closed out possibly by the end of October. And I'll open it up for any questions on this project.
Okay, anybody have any questions?
My questions probably have to go to Clemson to see how we got grass that fast. By yard.
That was a little magic, but yeah.
Okay, all right, if there's none, you said you had a second project.
Okay. Yes, sir, the second one is for the East Side Water Project, and that was done in conjunction with the City of Walterboro. That one was awarded in June two thousand and nineteen, and it was done to improve the water pressure and fire flow on Francis Street, Barracata Road, Live Oak Street, Sixth Street, and Hickory Street. And that one served about a hundred and thirty-five residents, of which were about eighty-one percent LMI. That grant was awarded for four hundred and eighty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. We are still trying to total the last of the invoices on that, but we are looking at having to return about sixty thousand dollars on that that was under budget, thankfully. The local match on that one was sixty-one thousand, three hundred and twenty-three dollars. That was covered by City of Walterboro, since they are the ones that will own and maintain the water system. And this project will also be monitored financially and programmatically in October, and it is set to close out by the end of December of this year. And I will take questions on this one as well.
Okay, any questions on this project? Okay, hearing none. Thank you, Kimberly, for the information. Appreciate you being here with us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Council.
Okay, there's no other comments?
We go out of public hearing?
We've got a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. That'll bring us to item nine on the agenda, Old Business. Item eight, third reading, Ordinance Twenty-one dash O dash oh nine, authorizing the acquisition of certain heavy equipment and vehicles by Collin County, South Carolina, by lease purchase financing in the amount of not exceeding five million, five hundred thousand. The execution and delivery of certain instruments, including a lease purchase agreement by Collin County and other matters relating thereto.
Move.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously, brings us to item B under nine. Third reading, ordinance twenty-one dash oh dash ten to amend the Collin County Code of Ordinances, Chapter three point oh eight, purchasing to provide for the adoption of section three point oh eight point one seven five for protest procedures related to purchasing for state and federal grants in order to meet federal grant requirements.
So move.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Item C, second reading, ordinance twenty-one dash oh dash eleven to provide for the issuance and sale of not exceeding six million, five hundred thousand Fire Protection Service General Obligation Bonds of Collin County, South Carolina to prescribe the purposes for which the proceeds shall be expended, including the refunding of Fire Protection Service General Obligation Bonds for debt service savings and the acquisition of certain property for fire protection purposes to provide for the payment thereof and other matters relating there too.
Don't move.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, any discussion? There, there's a couple typos in there, but we'll get all that straight when we we get it done. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Brings us to item D. Second reading, ordinance twenty-one dash oh dash twelve granting an easement to Palmetto Rural Telephone Cooperative on a portion of property owned by the Collin by Collin County located at fifteen five eighty-three Bennett's Point Road, Collin County, South Carolina, and identified by Tax Map Series number three four zero dash zero zero dash zero zero dash zero twenty-two. Such easement is to be used for the installation, operation, and maintenance of a fiber distribution hub within Collin County, South Carolina to authorize execution and recording of the easement documents and other matters related there too. We have a motion. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries unanimously. Item E, second reading, twenty-one dash oh dash thirteen by Todd Lonely to provide for the issuance and sale of not exceeding two million dollars general obligation, refunding bonds of Collin County, South Carolina to prescribe the purposes for which the proceeds shall be expended to provide for the payment thereof and other matters relating there too.
So move.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Brings us to item ten, item A, first reading, ordinance twenty-one dash oh dash fourteen by Todd Lonely to ratify fiscal year twenty-one grant and budget resolutions and related appropriations for all funds to ratify transfer and other resolutions previously authorized by council and other matters related there too.
So move.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. That'll bring us to item B, Resolution twenty-one dash R dash forty-eight, authorize the acceptance of a grant from the South Carolina Department of Social Services for Child and Adult Care Food Program Grant for two thousand and twenty-two.
So move.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Brings us to item C, Resolution twenty-one dash R dash forty-nine to declare October the twenty-fourth through the thirtieth as Garnet and Gold Week in Collin County.
A move.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries unanimously. Item D, Resolution twenty-one dash R dash fifty to authorize the sole source purchase of wheel coach ambulance for Collin County Fire Rescue.
A move.
We got a motion.
Second.
And a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Item E, Resolution twenty-one dash R dash fifty-one to award the contract for design bill services for Collin County Food Assistance Facility.
A move.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, and the the winning better is IP Builders Inc., just for the record. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Item F, Resolution twenty-one dash R dash fifty-two to appoint members to the Collin County Safety Committee.
So move.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Just for the record, I'll read the names in, Ms. Laura Clark, Animal Environmental Control, Mr. Robbie Williams, Facilities Maintenance, Darryl Wilcox, Magistrate's Office, Sierra De Forre, Library, Helen Bowers, Roads and Bridges, Jack Wright, Fleet Management, Roger Johnson, Fire Rescue, George Rue, Sheriff's Office, Janet Dillard Smith, the EOC VA, the Coroner's Office, Ms. Kaye Seifert from Finance, Mr. Johnny Bartlett, Solid Ways, Dee Sadler, Human Resources, and Mr. George Welch from Risk Management. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Bring us to item G, Resolution twenty-one dash R dash fifty-three to authorize the council clerk to advertise for board vacancies.
So move.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify.
Aye.
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 Chairman, you still here? Is the chairman still here?
Think he's frozen.
Let me give him a chance to log back in before we move on without him. Let's see if I can get him on the line.
Okay, I think he's trying to log back in now.
Okay. See ya.
Not yet.
Okay, I got the chairman on the phone.
I don't know what happened. I'm trying to get back in, but all of a sudden I just went out.
You all right on the phone? Okay, you on the phone, you can go ahead.
Okay, all right. Let's see, I'm actually trying to join here again now.
Okay.
If the host is, will let me in. I was at the.
Turn off your mute now. Or turn your mic on, either one, yeah.
Can y'all hear me?
Yes, sir.
See ya.
All right, I don't know what happened. You never know over here. Now the FBI might be on with me. I think we were at, we were getting ready to vote on this authorization to advertise for board vacancies. Is that where I dropped out?
Yes, sir, it was unanimous.
Okay, all right, so we'll move on then to item H, Resolution twenty-one dash R dash fifty-four to appoint members to board vacancies.
That's right.
Okay, is there a motion that we adopt that?
Yes, sir, by acclamation, the the names that are listed here.
Okay, all right, yeah, that's the one that we had, the replacement. We've got Keep Collin Beautiful Board, Angela McAdoo, the Collin County Commission on Alcohol and Drug Abuse has three vacancies, and we got Ms. Vera Bodison and Lee Cook. Collin County Planning Commission, one vacancy, Mr. R Ian Paget. Collin County Board of Adjustments and Appeals has three vacancies. We have one applicant, Ms. Kimberly Kraus. Okay, if there's no other comment, does anybody have any more comments? Did we have a motion and a second?
You had a motion.
Okay. Okay, we got a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries unanimously. That brings us to item eleven, Items for Information in Public Record, there are one evening. Item twelve, Public Comments. This is, of course, because we're virtual, we were gonna allow public comments, individuals to make public comments on the our collingtoncounty.org comment. I'm not aware of any. I do have one public comment that I received. And this is from Ms. Carol Black, and I will read the comment into the record for Ms. Black. She sent this by email. And the comment says, from Ms. Black says, "I believe the county should publicly recognize Barry McCroy for his efforts during the COVID-nineteen pandemic. He and his department are already handling the emergencies that arise in normal times, but on top of that, they have to assist those who have developed the COVID virus, whether the person has been vaccinated or not. Barry has recently come under criticism from a Collin County resident in two letters to the editor in the local newspaper, and I think it is important for all citizens of the county to see that the council members support Barry and value his dedication to his truly life-saving work. I see that council recently issued a proclamation honoring the late magistrate, Richard Wood. I think Barry deserves the same type of commendation, which I hope will be covered in in the same local newspaper. Thank you." And that was from Ms. Carol Black. Do we have, does anybody know if we have any other received any other comments, or is there anyone online who would like to make a comment? Okay, if there are none, we'll move then to item thirteen, council time. Is there any members of council who would like to make any comments at this time?
Mr. Chair, I got just a couple of comments if you.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Certainly, I want to make the community aware, we we did receive as a county a Code Red being implemented by the Collin County Fire Rescue's Emergency Management Division. And this is an awesome opportunity for every resident within the county. Basically, it's a notification system similar to the Amber Alerts or similar to other alerts that go out. And the county has made this available to every resident within the county. They can get alerts to their home phone via a voice message, their mobile phone, by a text message, or an email address. The Code Red notifications are an alternative to social media. I think this came timely as we saw huge outage on one of the social media networks yesterday for several hours. But it's different than the integrated public alerting and warning system, but it's integrated with it. And more information can be found about Operation Code Red. They can actually text nine nine four one one and text alert Collin to that address. Or they can actually go to collintonfire.com forward slash code red to register. I think we'll do everything we can to make sure people find out about Code Red so that they can be notified. For example, when Hendersonville Highway was washed out, that would not have risen to the level of a I-PAS notice. But if they were on the Code Red, every resident in the county would have been notified that that road was washed out in order to get an alternate route taken. So it's a really good system, it's free, and everybody in the county needs to to register for that so that they can be alerted for emergencies that that rise up in the county in that level. The next thing that I wanted to mention at the Low Country Council of Governments right now, there is a Low Country Low Country Rural Transportation Survey on the website. Anyone concerned about transportation issues, roads, other things going on within the county, if they will go to lowcountrycog.org, lowcountrycog.org, you'll see on the website, there is a long-range Latin rural area twenty-twenty-four long-range transportation plan survey. We need as many residents who would like to have input on this survey to read the information, make their comments aware on that survey by completing that survey. They can actually call eight four three four seven three three nine nine zero to find out more about that survey. Also, just kind of mentioning this as Mr. Bright knows, came on tonight. There is a concerted effort by the CAG to take a real extensive look at the senior and aging population. What are we doing right? What are we not doing right? Ms. Barbara Johnson is heading that up. But I would like anyone who has some ideas about how we can better serve seniors in our communities to please give the Low Country Council of Governments, because they're doing a comprehensive look in a in a regional approach of what are we doing for seniors in our community, so that that's something else that they may be interested in accessing, getting in touch with them for that. When, tonight, when we made the presentation to Ms. Grant, something that Senator Bright asked me about, and it brought it up to mind when when you mentioned the the note by Ms. Carol Black tonight. She was saying to us that maybe there could be a way that our county could have a recognition similar to what the state does with the Order of the Palmetto. Maybe we have things, citizens that we'd like to recognize, maybe we can't put their name on a building, but we could do some proclamation or something that would recognize them. She said other counties are doing something like it, and I certainly think that maybe the county could consider a way to recognize citizens beyond just a normal proclamation that we do with Citizen Award. So it's just something to take in advisement. Senator Marjorie Bright asked me to ask the the county about doing that. And I removed my comment, Mr. Chair. Is he still here?
And while we're waiting for the chairman to return, I just want to report that Low Country Community Action Agency does have some additional funding to support those that are behind in their rent. They don't have anything if you're behind in your mortgage, but they do have something, some support if you're behind in your rent.
Thank you, Councilman. All right, well, as as vice chair, we'll kind of keep moving. Does anyone else on the council have anything they'd like to bring up?
We're going to executive session.
So move. We have a motion to go into executive session. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Tonight, we have items in that we can discuss and not discuss, but have been receiving information on personnel, number one, facilities, number two, with the solicitor, and number three, with the clerk of court. We will return back to council concluding the executive session. We will go into executive session. All in favor, saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We're now in executive session.
During executive session, we discussed personnel matters related to facilities, soliciting the clerk of court. We have a motion adjourned at this time.
Mm-hmm.
Second, and a second, any discussion? Here you know all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries unanimously.
Good night.
Thank you everybody.
Good night Joe.
See you later.